So why don't we, well, I'll call this meeting to this the Bendon, Massachusetts, Select Board from March 3rd, 2025. And if you could please
and super Republican for which is one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And I forgot to mention this meeting is being recorded. It looks like we have some more in common.
Yep.
Presence?
All right, yep. So we'll call the FinCon meeting to order at 6:31 PM.
Great. So thank you for joining us tonight. I'm glad that many of you could make it or that we did not have a chance to coordinate with dates for you. So I'm glad that this worked out for at least four of you.
Yeah.
So thank you. So we have a short agenda, but I guess some, you know, longer items. So this is the first of a number of budget presentations. So Jeremy, do you want to start us off?
Yeah. So thanks, everyone. Excited to kick off the fiscal 2026 budget calendar with you all. So how I imagine will structure tonight, I'm going to give a little bit of a a big picture of where we are. So I've asked department heads to be a bit maximalist to say, let's provide a level service budget. And then what else do you want? You kind of talk about those two as two separate buckets. So tonight we'll be speaking with planning, we'll be speaking with HR and delve into insurance, and we're speaking with FIRE. What I'll do now is I'll go through what I call my snapshot, just a really high level revenue expense compared against each other. Talk a little bit of how I got to rub some revenue pieces that we're in now. This will just take a few minutes and then we'll dive into, in starting off with planning. So I'm going to share my windows so anyone watching can. That's real. So our this is what our revenue picture looks like. We take our fiscal 2025 levy, $19.8 million. We have a proposition two and a half increase ceiling of almost $500,000. On the principal assessor has provided me with a new growth estimate of $250,000, which gets us to our levy limit for fiscal 26. Our debt exclusion, this is tax revenue that's raised in one in the, to the penny of what our principal and interest payments are on our excluded debt. This is our state aid, less our offsets, and these are our local receipts. So that brings us to a revenue number of 24.2 million. Our requested budget is 25.2. So there's a line item in here, prior year snow nice deficit. We'll talk about how we end up funding, will ultimately be a deficit in that in that department for fiscal 25, because it snowed for the first time in five years. So we spent a lot on salt this year. We can make that up with current year transfers from available resources. We can appropriate free cash in fiscal 25 to close that deficit, or we can raise it on the next year's levy. There are two accounts which are funded each year at town meeting, assessors valuation update and assessor cyclical program. That gets great time standard rate from the levy as well. So we can continue to do that. We can also use free cash to appropriate into that. The assessors, the board of assessors, when they're here, can talk about that in a little more detail. So we have a $1.2 million difference right now. Again, this is folks asking for everything they want. State aid is really stagnant, or sorry, really static. We don't have any, any real sway here. So $655,000 in state aid in the governor's budget proposal, which is almost 5% up from the year prior. Our assessments are similar. And our local receipts is where we have, you know, Prop 2 and a half hems us in pretty tight. State aid, same thing. So local receipts are where we can right size our budget, so to speak. When we were talking about the surplus that resulted in the free cash that we had at the end of fiscal 24, how much of that was structural versus how much of that was one time? Half of the structural piece is the revenue side. So we can see here just simply on motor vehicle excise tax. In fiscal 24, collected 1.3 million, over 1.3 million, and we budgeted less than 1.3 million here. So we know there was one more one more commitment that resulted in probably about $50,000 extra revenue. But I think we have a little bit more to squeeze here. So we can talk about this more in depth, probably after we talk about expenses. But if you see here in column Q, a negative number, that's how much lower the current fiscal 26 number is than the fiscal 24 actual. We can ignore solid waste. I can fill for it at the bottom. But in each, even, so being conservative here, we're still $700,000 less than our fiscal 24 actuals. And we end up being $150,000 higher when we control for solid waste than our fiscal 25 budget. I think there's some more room to move here. This is a little conservative on my end. But we can talk about that in relation to multi-year averages. I'm going to come back to snapshot.
Real quick, so FY26 budget to FY24 actual. So this is showing our revenues are down, but when we normalize for the change and how we're doing trash, essentially, we end up positive 140.
Yeah. Yep. So here in line 32 on this document, and so small, I tinkered a little bit since I sent yours out, that fiscal 25 is here at 2.1 2.116 million was our fiscal 25 budget controlling for the solid waste. And we have 2.63 here in fiscal 26, which is a 7% increase. Which that helps us outside of Prop 2. Because the one thing you'll hear from budget managers all the time is two and a half doesn't get there. So I plan to just dive right into planning, talk about what we're doing differently with planning. We have we have assistant town planner Dylan Wentholm here to go through it.
Good. Yes. So is there room like here, maybe? There or?
That's where he takes anyone. All right. So I will bring up the documents that you all have to make sure. So what we're looking at here in planning, actually, sorry, Dylan, can you introduce yourself?
I'm Dylan Luton, I'm the assistant planner. Also mentioned that I'm the tri-town planner on the IMA with other towns, that's Bridgeville.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that. And so, so here's planning. Right now, we're tilted towards contracted services, salaries and wages is our, half of our admin assistant that's in there. So well, we've, let's get rid of requested so we can actually see. Alright, so right now, we have Jack Hunter on a, as town planner with contracted services, and then we're in an IMA with Uxbridge and Millville for Dylan services. So Dylan is a full-time employee of the town of Uxbridge. What this budget is requesting is having, exiting the IMA, which expires every June 30th, and having a full-time planner within this budget. I sent her on a narrative about planner duties, which were derived directly from Dylan, and they can talk about it way better than I can. But principally, when I tried to explain the intro to my letter was that typically, when we go from a part-time to a full-time, the big trigger for us is the application of benefits and the costs associated with that. The difference here is that the IMA that we have with Uxbridge incorporates Dylan's salary retirement contribution, the town side of Dylan's retirement contributions, and other benefits, insurance premiums. And then we pay a proportionate share of that. So we're, it's not like we're going from 0.4 salary to 1.0 salary and benefits. Right now, we're going from 0.4 salary and benefits to 1.0 salary, which is what this question is asking. The IMA as of right now is, I believe it's 0.4 Uxbridge, 0.4 us, and 0.2 Millville. I've talked to both town manager and in Uxbridge and the town administrator in Millville. I have another meeting with Millville about separate issue we have in Millville, but I have a meeting with him later this week and talking about the possibility of Dylan staying on or the position staying on as a IMA just with Millville to have a 0.2 there. So it would be 0.8 funded by us and 0.2 funded by Millville to kind of make the, make it a little budget friendlier. That's not the way the budget is presented right now. The budget is presented with a full weight 1.0, and that's what I would ultimately envision asking town meetings to fund. But there is that possibility of a 20% cost there with Millville. So what we see here, salary and wages for a planner, 1.0 FTE, half of the admin. And then the latest town hall contract for folks that are on the step scale involves steps for them. So the steps are calculated here. And then we have a health insurance opt-out, a small payment, much, much smaller than what we pay in actual premiums. But $48 a week?
$48 a week, but $96.16 for our combined payroll.
Thank you.
$2,500.
$2,500 a year. So we have a yearly payment equal to about a month worth of premium. So that's paid out of the salary and wages line. And I don't know how that's always been calculated. I put it in here. So that's where that big jump is there. Most of these other lines, you see level funded, the contracted services. So this is where we have the wiggle room sort of thing. I talked to the chair of the planning board. So contracted services is where we paid Jack Hunter. And then we pay some other small things out there. This year, we barely spent anything. But the chair of the planning board wanted some money that's in there to be able to go to the third-party, you know, independent consultants, experts throughout the year. I think that number's high, which you'll see from me later. But there should be something there. And
The existing, do you know the existing numbers? So we didn't pay anything. That's the sense of balls to free cash every year.
Yeah, I think we've spent $2,200 or something like that here. Besides the Jack Hunter salaries.
So is Jack?
Jack is, yeah, sorry if I, I know this and sometimes forget to.
I know.
So Jack Hunter, Jack Hunter is retiring April 1st. He'll take his big step back and then stay on a handful of hours a week, an hour or two a week. He's heavily invested professionally and seemingly emotionally at this point, and the water. So he wants to kind of see that through. And he's done large-scale water projects in other communities before, and I think it'd be a benefit to have him on for.
He's been working on the apartment housing stuff.
Yeah, and he's in our affordable housing coordinator. So in the descriptions of the full-time planner that Dylan wrote up, Dylan will take on that part of his portfolio as well. So that's where we're at. I thought it was important to have Dylan here as we're asking to, who will be staffed for the department, a full-time employee. We can go through the job duties that we, that we shared, if you'd like, kind of broken down into assume some stuff from Jack, continue some stuff that I'm, that Dylan's doing now, and then expand and have some, have some new opportunities, which we still have the hours for.
The $30,000 I see for contract services, is that intended to be solely for planning boards' miscellaneous costs if they need it?
Yeah. So that's why I think it's a little high. Bill didn't have a number in mind. He just wanted to have something to be able to access kind of quickly. That's, you know, we paid Jack, I think, more, I'd have to look, but more than $26,000. Like, that's, that's a bigger chunk of the non-Jack portion of that than currently exists. But I would.
It's a lever.
Yeah, it's.
Do we have the average spend over the last, next 12 years minus Jack's salary? I mean, it's, yeah, it's very hard to say if it's too much or too little without
Yeah, we can.
Last year's data is fine, but that's just one.
So we'll pull that, it, but it's so, it's not so, it's a little idiosyncratic when they're like, we want to do this one big project this year. And there's a $16,000 consulting invoice when we don't have that any of the prior three years.
We should have plenty of documentation showing spend and be able to account for this, right?
So, yep. So this is the, this is the requested.
Understood.
Yeah. So we can, we'll provide that when we get to the recommended. Also, a lot of the one-off that planning can do, and correct me if I'm wrong too, but if it's specific to an application and it's funded by the applicant, we use what are called 53G accounts, which are project-specific accounts and the applicant pays for those sorts of things. So a lot of times when planning board has a question relative to work that they're doing, they turn to the applicant and the applicant pays us, and then we pay the consultant. So they don't have to hit this piece for most of their engagements.
I mean, I do think it's part of departmental procedure that requests like this should come with some sort of background and detail of why the ask. At the risk of sounding hypocritical for the FinCon reserve number, right? That's at least based off of best practices, right, is my only background for why that number exists. But for this, there's, that should be an expectation.
So you will see that exists for lots of departments. We're going to pull up additional request sheet that FIRE put together for theirs. Right now, you have just an elected board and a part-time staff member who also supports other communities. So this budget, you know, Dylan has not managed this budget as the assistant town planner. That's not one of the principal. So you see if she wants to do more of that and understand this budget a lot more. But yeah, it, great, definitely should have.
Perfect. Yeah, under, lots of transition going.
So just so I understand, I know Jack is mostly retiring, reducing to a sort of nominal number of hours a week. You are you would be increasing your hours for Bendon, but potentially still also working with some other towns. But will that sort of the, the net, will we have a net increase of planner hours? Is that like, is that the expectation or is it more of a reconfiguration?
So does Jack have, what, 10 hours a week?
Yeah, so he'd be on for one or two hours.
Yeah. So, so right now we have Dylan for 16, Jack for, I think, 10. So we're going, we'd be going from 26 to either 32 to 40, depending on how you can shoot on IMA. So it is a, a net increase.
It's my goal to be full-time. Yeah. And this is my priority. If Millville is recently involved and Jeremy wants to work with them to include them.
I also, I'm also sensitive to other, I know, I put this to me first, but I'm sensitive to other communities and saying in February, when process two, by the way, this thing you anticipate and expect to rely on, we're going to yank it away here. So if we can maybe do that over the course of two years, say eight hours a week now, while you figure out what you're doing, Millville, or if you want to exit the IMA, give us 90 days heads up or something like that. Also, they might not be interested. I
I mean, this feels like from a budget standpoint, you want to put a full-time planner position in place from a budget, from a budget standpoint, the execution doubt if this budget will pass, whether it's affected by the IMA. And, and what candidate we choose to hire.
Yeah.
This is about position. First, you couldn't, you couldn't see us.
So I guess, just, I know we have this document, which is very helpful, talking about the planner job duties, but I guess could, could one of you speak briefly to sort of what, what we would gain from, like what, I guess, functions? Right. So just a few points. It doesn't have to be all the details. Like what, what will we, what will Mendon gain from this change?
Sure. I lost that document. It's on my personal email.
I will. Did you have your email up right there?
Yeah, I did. Alright.
Or do you want me to put it up on the screen?
Yeah. So I know what we're saying.
What you sent me.
Okay, good.
While you're pulling that up, in the proposal to have Millville take 20%, I guess I'm assuming their other needs are filled by other people in their town, or like, why are they getting away with only 20% of time for this position?
They are often. So right now, I'm there for eight hours a week. And with those eight hours, I've accomplished a lot, which hasn't been touched. They might have somebody show up for eight hours a week for half a year and then it's over. So I've been there now two years and bringing a lot of warrant articles, changing zoning bylaws and how these happen.
So negligently.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So here, here we have Dylan broke down the work in a couple of different broad categories. So town planner.
Yeah. So the main category here is obviously just the main functions of our duties of a town planner. A lot of what we do, what I would like to do as planner instead of assistant planner. We meet with developers, we meet with applicants who want to pull a special permit, build a subdivision. Sometimes you need a special permit for just opening a new kind of business or a certain amount of construction. So we meet with them, make sure that their plans fit with the town, and we work with them to make sure that their vision and our vision are aligned before they come to planning board. I think one of the most important things is working on the zoning bylaws. Bringing the Mendon vision to the bylaws so that when we meet with people who are interested in bringing their business to town, that we're already in a place where we're set up, where they're not going to put something in that doesn't fit. So the goal is to sort of work with the master plan, work with the planning board, what their goals are, work with the select board, what your goals are, and make sure that when somebody comes in, they say they want to build crazy thing, that it's not, it's not possible here, or it is possible, depending on what we're looking for. Besides just attending the planning board meetings, we advise the planning board as volunteers. A lot of them have a lot of experience in the planning board, but especially for new members or complex case, there's a lot of research that can be done in advance, legal research, deed research, anything like that that I really enjoy. Just to help them get along with where they're at and what they need to do in process, or to approve or disapprove of projects that are coming in. Another big thing for planning departments, maybe not the board itself, but as a planner, be different projects. So the water study is one major project that planning department is heavily invested in. Affordable housing is often something that a planner would be heavily invested in. I don't know what else to put there.
Yeah, water study, affordable housing, advising the ZPA.
The ZPA doesn't have full-time staff. They have an admin assistant right now. So assisting them with the legal research or understanding application that comes to them, that's also something I've been doing and continue to do.
So I see on here, assist the economic development committee. Is that something that happens now or is that something?
Come a few times to speak with them. Different initiatives they want to promote or progress with. Inspire them about what sort of grants they could possibly look for. Right now, it's just sort of inspire themes, but if there's something I can help them with, I'd love to continue to advise them when they're looking for something.
So this is one of the areas which we could focus more on. There hasn't been a great deal of focus on that. And we have a planner for 16 hours a week. We've focused on the planning. So this would be one of the expansive areas for us.
It's like awesome. Is this another, is this something that, like, are you also able to provide continuity across those certain levels? Right now, being here part-time, so if you're more, then that's more contact agents and more contact.
Yeah. Yeah. Like, it's incidental when I, when I go to help ZPA or help the economic development committee. I don't have any follow-up or follow-through to a lot of things. I can sort of give them direction, but then I don't have the time to do the work myself. And now I really tell them all the knowledge of the discussion.
So let me look at this. There's a, there's a threat with all these committees. There's synergies across all these committees. And I think tethering these volunteer committees back to the operation is important to drive execution. I think that's what this role could kind of provide is sort of the, the engine to make sure that you've got the continuity Jason's talking about. And the just a streamline, a plan, if you will, planning department around execution. So I think this makes a lot of sense. And so a budget would, yeah, that's it. So the budget, the 53G is part of the, that was what you were saying, are the accounts that hold money for?
Right. So the planning board's got a revolving account. That was essentially everything smushed together. And there was no segregation of funds based on a project level. I imagine the person who's administering it, that was the direction they got to begin with, and that's what they ran with. I don't think it was necessarily negligent execution. I think it was just kind of not quite understanding how we're supposed to account for these things. And it was Dylan who came in my office and was like, this is so we sorted those out after a lot of unwinding from planning department and accounting. And so keeping those up, I mean, it's not, it's not, we're not going to hire someone just to do 53G accounts, but there is a lot more administrative minutia on these now than there has previously been, which largely will fall to the admin assistant, but the admin assistant also needs supervision and needs department head leadership and.
It feels like there's a level of expertise or knowledge in this type of role. Some in the conservation last year. Pulled that position in, where like volunteer committees, like I for one would know where to start a lot of this stuff in terms of what works, what doesn't work. So I think getting some expertise, knowledge in this type of role would make a lot of sense. So I'm still in favor. Yeah, it's, it seems like that's one of the things that we've been focusing on is having in-house expertise and having somebody present down all the time.
And this will, we'll get into it later, but this will how slot into the framework of inspectional services coordinator and the so talk about continuity of service, having inspectional services coordinating, planning, planning, zoning, conservation, building, health, all kind of one approach to one manager. Any more questions for Dylan?
Good.
Thank you.
So we have our next, human resources. Yes, Jen, if you could join us, please, and introduce yourself.
Don Moby, I'm Ken O'Meara, I'm the HR working for the town of Bendon. Very large budget.
So, yeah, we'll talk about Jen's budget and then we'll talk. So human resources department, I guess, not everyone lives in municipal finance or works in finance. When you see, for folks, anyone who listens or is listening, this big long string we have here just refers to one thousand, the first four numbers, that's our fund. So 1,000 is the general fund. 152 is our department code for human resources. So our general ledger matches up with UMass Unified Massachusetts Accounting System. So in every holiday that has their act together, human resources are going to be 152. And then the object code 5110, you'll see that across departments. That's your salaries and wages. So for anyone, that's what we're talking about here. So salaries and wages, you can see the department. Um, so salaries and wages, you can see the department head comment here, we had a, a predecessor rate, so actually, um, we have a decrease year over year in new salary line. Um, the next line, recruitment, retention and training, there's two things lumped into here, we might split it out. Um, right now, the select board pays for HR's, um, meetings and dues budget, so just getting that to Jen. So, um, she doesn't have to message me and say, can I do this forty-dollar training? She can be empowered to like go do her own thing. Um, and the recruitment intention, I think we've been creative with that, if you want to talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, so we've been. In previous years, that budget line item was not really touched, um, I think there may have been a few bad plays for them, MMA or things like that. Um, but what I've done this year is I really want to use it for employee training and engagement. Um, because our employees really are, you know, the important backbone of running the town. So I've been able to bring in some trainings, a lot of the trainings are free or minimal cost through some of our partners like Maya or MMA. Um, but what I found to get them here, the employees here is happy to be them. So, I mean, I've been using, I've been using that budget for that, I just did a training, um, using resources from the fire department. So we were able to get, um, all the town hall staff, it's now trained in bystander CPR and AED. We have an AED machine here that I don't think anyone first of all knew was here and how to use it. So thanks to our fire department, we've been able to do that, do the same training at the library. So again, this small budget is used for, uh, paying for some of those services. And the other thing I'm using this line item for this year is, um, we partnered with Nipok, the school.
Carol.
Um, they have an internship program. And, um, we will be bringing on an intern for the, they're the junior intern for a three-week period, so I'm going to be able to give them the smallest type of interview. Here. That's why I'm looking for a little moment.
And, uh, you know, we did, also did things like when the highway department was here for twenty hours or something on a snowstorm, we got pizza delivered to the highway yards. Um, as a employee morale sort of program.
Yeah, wow, that's good.
Hey, I don't know how without someone who delivers.
I found a pizza place open, willing to drive to those regional locations.
Yeah, yeah, so it wasn't just the highways, it was also the police and fire.
Police and fire, so yeah, we, we wanted to make sure that our first responders and safety was also, was fed during the store while the rest of us were comfy cozy in our homes.
Um, so, yeah, we, um, we identified that, or talked about before about employee morale, um, as something we want to focus on. There's a, um, a small program I'd like to do, um, I don't know if it should be rolled into here or not, I have to talk to the accountant to figure out where it should go in my recommendation, but um, we have, also administered through HR, so now's the right time to talk about it. Um, we have what are called four-fifty-seven plans, um, so deferred compensation plans similar to a, uh, private sector employer's 401K. A lot of private sector employers match 401K contributions, is not what I'm saying. But in order, as a, as a nudge, in order to get folks involved and participating in this program, to do, well, you know, every year as of October first or whatever, the town puts a hundred dollars into everyone's account who has an active and open account. Or some, some small amounts, some employee appreciation amounts, um, that incentivizes folks to do this long-term you know, financial planning for their benefit at a small cost to the town. So that will be singled out somewhere because it's brand new and, I don't know, may not be popular, I think it will be, um, but that'll be.
You're giving away money, I think.
Well, I think of popular win employees, I'm talking about people who.
Well, tomorrow, to have the, you know, presented, from power coming to sort of inform employees about what important to them the plan is, and hopefully we'll get some more people to sign up to use it. Because right now, in the voluntary plan, I only have six employees that are currently.
It has all the benefits of 401K, but without the ten percent early withdrawal. Healthy, so like it's, it's an awesome plan. Um, and when you look at what folks' pension benefits are, we talked about eighty percent of your highest years of earning, but that's a small subset of folks, and that's, um, after years and age, you can, the youngest you can get that, I think it's sixty-four, sixty-five. Um, and, uh, you know, that's if you take option A, if you want any survivor benefits, you're never going to get to your eighty percent. So, um, we have lots of folks who will be retiring on less than forty percent of what their, um, salaries are as a pension. So we want to make sure that we're setting folks up for success, you know, supplementing that in the long term. Also, we have young staff, so time's the best thing you can have, so if we can get the young folks.
Is there a max contribution to the four?
It's the same as the 401K, so like twenty-two-nine or whatever it is this year.
I'm also in favor of programs that increase, uh, employee morale and retention, because I know we do much better as a town when we keep our employees and, uh, we're not scrambling to hire all the time. So, so I think if this is, if this is one of those ways that sort of builds a, uh, positive work culture, sounds like it would be a good investment in that way.
Like similarly, we just launched a voluntary benefits program, so the town doesn't pay anything for it, but, um, it's, um, critical injury, hospital, um, stuff, there's a short-term disability program because of the municipality, we don't participate in PFML like the private sector and state entities do. Um, so it helps, essentially, it's exactly like PFML, but without paternity. Um, and then, um, some, there's a life.
How's all the tie-in with the union benefits?
These are all employee paid, one hundred percent paid. Um, so, and it's all voluntary, so we had, we had pretty good participation, but, um, I don't, I don't think we really viewed it through that lens.
What's the question that you have?
Uh, I, I.
How it ties in with, with the uni- union benefits? What is their, what is their, uh, business agent?
The voluntary piece of it?
Yeah, so this is all stacking too, like we have a short-term disability plan for the town, but it, if you make above a certain threshold, it's not going to be, um, income replacement for you, so all these benefits stack on whatever is currently existing. And like I said, no cost to the town, all voluntary, but we gave folks an opportunity to say, you know, we coordinated the program, we do the payroll deductions, we pay the vendor through those deductions. Um, that's just another option to.
But you're adding like, financial education on more than, uh, your healthcare benefits basis, is that a plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to try to do a little more education on all of our plans. Especially with open enrollment this year, because I think you all saw the increase.
We're talking about that? Um, alright, so speaking of health insurance, so, uh, the town participates in Maya, um, for, um, for our health, for our property and casualty, but for our health insurance. And the anticipated increase that Maya gave us, um, when we talked to them a couple of months ago, was the member pool was between a nine and a nineteen point nine percent increase in premiums. Um, with the average being in the fourteen range, and we are, have a nineteen point nine-two percent increase in our health insurance premiums. So what that looks like is, um, this is a twelve, this is a December count of who we have in each type of plan. So down here, you know, here's our current costs in the, in the pinkish thing down here, um, and that costs nine hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. And the same people in that same plan in fiscal twenty-six costs one point one million dollars, an increase of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars without, without changing anything. I want to zoom in because the stuff on the right is to talk about a little bit later. So a hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase to ensure the same people with the same plan. I will say this medex number here, um, I increased, um, by fifteen percent, um, because rates, rates increased mid-year. Um, they increase in the calendar year, so we always just put a placeholder there. It's, it's not ever really going to drive our budget, the difference between what my placeholder and our actual thing is. Uh, we just want to be able to see savings and not have to transfer into the account. Medex is our supplemental retiree. Um, we will see, we will do open enrollment in April. Um, so we won't have real numbers, um, in terms of people who are enrolled in health insurance. Uh, I will say I'm staying on my waste plan this year again, so that saves forty thousand dollars to the. Um, so, um, what we have here are possible additions for fiscal twenty-six, so I took what we have as the ask, stealing to bang this under a little. But, um, I have four additional firefighters. Should have done this in PDF, sorry. Um, four additional firefighters, uh, council and aging is asking to bring their, um, assistant to full-time. Uh, facilities and grounds person in the highway department and assistant town administrator, which again, we'll talk to later. And we have two employees who turned twenty-six this year, so I don't know if they're going to take our insurance, I don't know if they're married, I don't know if they have kids. Um, but, um, so what I took here was the count of these nine possible additions, paraded it for the fact that, you know, somebody's not going to take it. Um, or I have a plan cost wrong, this average cost of the plan, so this is single family, the different ratings that we have, this is just the average. And so these additions would add a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to our health insurance this year. So as we're thinking about a position, whether we want to add a position, you know, we're talking at the most, you know, thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand dollars, someone takes the most expensive family plan. Uh, but on average, because we don't know, these people aren't identified yet, we're at the twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollar, um, range for plan. In addition to that, um, we have, so the planner IMA, I rolled this in here because currently the planner tick, the planner takes benefits, um, through Uxbridge. So I assumed a continuation of that here. Um, and then we have a staff member who is coming on to our insurance from their spouse's insurance before we know, before we do open enrollment. So since I know that cost, it's put into here as well. So with all of that, our health insurance budget, we have our, actually before I get to these numbers here, we have also explored, and Jen can talk about this a little bit more. Um, an HSA eligible, high deductible health plan, um, which would, um, you know, decrease, would we would, it would be a third plan that we offer, right now we offer an HMO and a PPO, it would be a high deductible health plan and HMO, so it wouldn't replace any of these. Um, and then it comes with an HSA component, which we, then we'd have to educate staff on as a, as a new financial tool. Again, great financial tool, you can actually invest your assets that you have in there, it's not just sitting in a high-yield savings account. Um, uh, but that was, that may, some folks may move over to that, especially younger folks who don't utilize healthcare very often. Uh, I think it's a great option for a lot of them, but it's, it being the first year that we're going to offer it, um, I, I don't have a great way of gauging who's going to be on and who's not through open enrollment, so I haven't put it into this, these assumptions here.
So anecdotally, I can just share some information I got from our MIRFs. And other towns have offered these deductible plans, and what the employee sees is huge savings in their premium. And that's why I think we're willing to educate our employees before they do take this plan, because what they're finding is that when open enrollment comes around the following year, a lot of people are dropping off this and going back to their traditional HMO. So again, I think it, it doesn't cost the town any additional money to offer this plan, um, and I think I have a great tier.
Can, can you repeat, you're saying they're taking the high deductible plan and then finding that they don't like it and going back to traditional, is that because of the sticker shock?
I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, they're, they're saving in their bi-weekly paycheck, I mean, quite a bit. So in, in an individual, um, they're saving about twenty dollars a week, which doesn't sound, or twenty dollars a paycheck, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you know, you're young and what, that's, that's a lot of money, but then when they have to go to the hospital and realize they now have a two thousand dollar deductible. And the town is only going to pay a thousand dollars because that's what we pay, and then they have to do an eighty-twenty split.
Bi-weekly?
We're, we're bi-weekly, yes, we didn't know that.
Uh, we only get paid bi-yearly, so I don't notice.
Wait, you're getting paid?
Sorry. Um, the chair, the yard.
I haven't gotten any of it.
Why, that's why you're.
I'm saving, I'm saving.
Uh, back to the, the healthcare, so, uh, we're cut out of time here, like, to finesse new plans or maybe not, but in the private industry, we found the same thing. Um, and to solve some of this is to, for employees, uh, what a lot of people in private industry did was pre-seed HSA accounts. You know, say that if that premium's going to cost the town, you know, fifty percent less, and you put twenty-five percent of that, that in their HSA for the first year, you still have that twenty-five percent savings, and they get a pre-seeded HSA account with free pieces to hit throughout the year, there's, there's like financial perks we can.
Carolina talked about that, but we're also, we're paying the deductible for employees, so we're, we're already paying the deductible.
Not to do the HSA with a PPO.
That's one of the reasons, I don't, I don't know prior to becoming on board why choices were made. Um, but I do know, we talked about possibly funding some of the HSA. But that's a, that's an actual dollar amount we'd have to fund, whereas with the deductible, we only pay if accused. So I, I think that you're saving more money.
I mean, I would hesitate to make a statement about what's happening till we actually have some raw data, but just like the industry data shows, if you want to retain people into these plans, you have to move them slowly over into them, you can't just, you know, say, look, if I'm twenty-six, I'm, I'm choosing the twenty-dollar plan, you know, it doesn't matter what you save, right? So, um, somebody needs to, and then they break their leg, and then all of a sudden, you know, all that money that they would have saved is all gone. So those, that's a part of the financial education, but it's also part of the number pain that has to be played in order to make this work long-term.
But you're right, sharing in the cost savings is something that I, I really like kind of as a budgetary approach. One of the first budgets I did, we saved a bunch of money, specifics on there, in the nursing department for, for Brooklyn Public Schools. And nurses weren't too happy about it, but we're like, listen, we'll take half of that savings, realize that as a district, and take the other half and plow it into your professional development budget, to your surprise budget, like all this other stuff. So they, they felt like, you know, they were being brought along in this, in this program. Um, so the difference between our current HMO plan with a thousand dollar deductible, a thousand, two thousand, and the high deductible, which is double, the, the, it's at two and four thousand, it's a cost savings to the town per month of four hundred, uh, over four hundred dollars per, per person on the plan. So it's considerable saving, right? We're saving more than the deductible total over the course of the year. Um, so I think we can finesse, uh,
meaning, brief solution. Just to, to give people background, previously, when we had other years, premium jumped so significantly. But the, the one way we did it, the union contract, to your point of like, you know, required, uh, had required that we keep certain parameters the same. So the way to be finessed it was to take the high deductible plan, which lowered the premium upfront, and then we put some money, you know, assigned to cover the deductibles. So ultimately, the town saved a lot of money, I mean, we took this from, from what the, from the school system. Saying, we saved a lot of money, uh, I mean, we're paying the deductible, but then over time, you know, rates keep going up.
But we're still paying, we're still paying the deductible. I mean, it is still a seventy-five, twenty-five split, so it's, it's still a good deal for the employee.
Yeah, so seventy-five, I'm sorry, so the weekly, the contribution though, as far as total healthcare cost, is that seventy-five, twenty-five?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the premium, the monthly premium, however you want to slice it, the monthly premium is seventy-five percent. And then we fully covered the deductible.
And we, and we also continue, do we do, we don't do the deductibles for retirees.
No.
Correct.
For retirees, it's still seventy-five, twenty-five, even. I, I think we only have to do fifty-fifty, probably just, probably just.
Yeah, we only have to do fifty-fifty, we don't have to cover.
Spouses.
And, and what was the total, I missed, the total percent that out came out?
A two point nine two.
That was.
Actually, it was twenty percent.
Oh, it's nice.
I'm sorry.
We're going to find a way to swing that up a point nine two.
That's what I said, so just under twenty.
Oh, yeah, just under.
That's why I said just under twenty. Each year we've asked that, that question. About, you know, exactly how much are we paying for the retirees? Pay seventy-five versus fifty? And then how much are we paying because we're paying for subsidies?
I did that exercise.
As I was going to say, I think that was like the first thing he did, and it showed it was minimal to negligible savings of.
So I asked that question.
Oh, we, we've asked that question every year I've been thinking.
But it's just.
I'm glad we finally got an answer. Oh, yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do the arithmetic, Mike, she's talking. Um, so then the other part of our, um, health insurance budget is what we've talked about here, um, deductible coverage. So our premiums, one point one seven, here's our new hires, another hundred and seventy, new currents, I'm calling them, those two, the planner and the other staff member. Um, and then deductible coverage, this is based upon historic, um, yep, plus then a spacer for new folks, um, that are on there, because not everyone hits a thousand dollars and, or two thousand dollars in deductible. Um, so we're at one, four, six, six, and then we talked about a million dollars in, in a hole we got to make up, you know, sixteen percent of it is just in the new people we're adding.
Five percent? That's a deductible cost. That's all.
We took, we looked at three or four years. Went, you know, we saw a choppy increase, not a linear increase, but we see an increase. Um, and then because we're adding new folks, I took the, what you just did, the percentage of the deductible cost over premium and said, and applied that to the new premium. And then applied that, and then added that to our historic add. And then applied that, and then added that to our historic average, and then made it a round number, because. Things like in twenty nine cents gives you this like false sense of specificity that I keep talking about, like it's not actually gonna be that. And I don't want you to think it's gonna be that number, so if this was what we ended up settling on, the budget would likely save four hundred and sixty seven thousand, one million, four hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, even though.
Nine, nine cents.
Yeah. Just makes it look like we know we're talking about more than we do, and I'm sure you know what I'm saying.
Oh, that always drove me nuts at work. Absolutely drove me.
So what I, what I always say to people is like, I don't know what it's gonna be, but I can tell you it's not gonna be that, right? It's not gonna be exactly that, so um that's how we got to the fifty seven.
Just curious about these in your three health plans, right?
Two right now, and I did ask our rep to get us a, a high deductible plan, she sent me a couple, and we looked at one. That would, uh that's the one that I, I mentioned that would save, you know, for an individual plan, um. Right now, if you're in a new individual HMO, it's one forty. One, for fiscal twenty six, it'll be one forty fourteen for biweekly payroll. If we go to the high deductible, if somebody switched to the high deductible plan, it'd be one twenty thirty four. Uh for PPO, it's gonna be one ninety three thirty one, those are individual plans. You get a family plan number if you really wanna choke. Five oh three seventeen biweekly for the PPO for family, three sixty four thirty seven. And then uh for the high deductible, it's three twelve eighty eight. So I mean, there's a, there's a big savings. Premium wise, and if you are somebody who's healthy and doesn't need to go to the doctor, but. Anybody with a family knows that kids get sick.
I actually switched to that last year, and I got hit with the sticker shock.
Yeah.
But the, the deductible. What I, what I, I ended up maxing out the deductible, and that plus the premium equaled, I think it was actually less than the top plan that I would have normally signed up for. So I ended up saving money in the end, and because I didn't dip into my HSA either, I ended up better at the end. But it was just, it's just weird sticker shock that you're not used to, so. There is some coaching, like there, there is some financial coaching that this can definitively work out. I think it worked out better for me as a, as on a family plan. Because when I was talking to people on individuals, I don't think that that math worked out the same, so.
So we can certainly have money in here to, during open enrollment, um they've given us a presentation that we can, we can show to employees as well.
Yeah, right, just like buying a car, it's not always just about the monthly pay.
So a, again, I, I do think we can offer, and, and to Jason's point too, is, is possibly. Starting this process next year a little bit earlier and going up to bid to see if there are, you know, outside of my, if there's anything.
So I've talked to a couple of other TAs who work with independent agents who gave me that information. Um so for, I guess not for free, uh you don't have to competitively procure insurance. Um it's best practice too, and we would solicit proposals, but um. That's why we can just keep with Maya year after year, and it's, and it's been a good experience, but um this year, um we're seeing premium increases across different um insurance collectives, but this is. This is bad.
So we're in brain insurance advisory board, that's on, that committee we need to get on the checklist. To, to chat about.
We can.
I mean, if we weren't on my end, we did competitively go out to bill, bid, would we have found an organization that was only fifteen percent increase versus nineteen percent? Nineteen point nine two, sorry, uh for the equivalent of what we set up for bid today.
And I mean, we offered Blue Cross plan, and, and really Blue Cross is the.
We, we all know what you mean.
But um you know, they do offer a lot of, all the opportunities for employees to, to utilize, you know, with the uh. Health uh remates you can get, or the big one right now is I'm trying to get everyone to put in for their sneakers, because they'll pay more, up to three hundred dollars for sneakers. Uh for a calendar year, yeah.
And like gym memberships and weight loss programs.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, I think, don't, Blue Cross Blue Shield is great. Uh I don't, I don't know the total inner workings of the insurance industry, and I don't know if there's some. I gotta assume there's some person and organization that drives something else, or organizes somebody that brings other people together, and everybody gets paid along the way. And at some point, there may be some better way to get Blue Cross Blue Shield through somebody else because of how the industry is stupidly set up, but.
So good to have.
Yeah.
Um yeah, so uh the, some of these independent agents I've talked to deal directly with Blue Cross Blue Shield, so exactly what you're talking about, for kind of being a little more direct on it. Um I will say, as I'm sure everyone's aware, the um, you know, our individual experience as an organization also drives our premium increases, which is why we weren't on the nine percent, we were on the nineteen percent, so. Um insurance loss ratios need to be somewhere in the eighty, mid eighties, I think, for math to work out for them, so like the amount. That they pay out over the amount that they take in, and ours was over a hundred last year, they paid out more than they took in from the town. So they look at, I think, a three year look back for us.
Yes.
Two year. Um so as stuff falls off, right, if that was a good year, that doesn't, that hurts us, but if it was a bad year, which was a lot of losses in it. Um it may compare to relative to the year that's coming on, may, so uh it's, that's why it's tough to just go and try to take a product off the shelf and say this one versus this one.
Budget billing every year.
Yeah, so.
Just rolling the balance essentially. We're gonna always pay whatever we took out at some point in time.
Yeah, they are, I mean, it's casino-like, right? They're going to make money.
Yeah.
But a lot of it to the driving our, our increases is prescription drugs. So that's where we're seeing our largest. Use, sort of prescription drugs, and I think um she mentioned Ozempic.
Yeah.
And with Ozempic now being looked at for other things other than diabetes and weight loss, you could be, you could be seeing a major increase as well.
One, one thing that lightened up our meeting though, is she let us know they're starting to offer teledental.
Yes, teledental.
None of us, none of us could have figured that one.
Washing teeth.
Yeah.
Interesting.
I've heard that if, if, if twenty five percent of Medicare eligible people were put on Wegovy, which is the other, and we bankrupt the system. Literally.
Yeah.
They said, and that's eligible people, not just torn it out there, so it's. Prescription drugs is huge, that's. And, and healthcare, I hate to say this, I work for M G B, we have seen huge, even employees have said, have seen huge increases in the last five years. I mean, it's been, and we only get one health M G B, and, but it's enormous, and I, you know, take a plane because everybody else is, the same thing's happening.
I've just spent, and I think it's worth, it might be worth staying in the Cadillac area if uh we don't have the like operational staff to maintain or run our own healthcare. Like some of these things get a lot cheaper, and you do a lot of the administrative work. I would hate to see us move there, just to save some money.
Just wondering why I'm doing that in my twenty fourth.
Well, right, it's, it's usually not possible.
Right.
And, and so, you know, you save money, but then you need an entire team of people to run it, so you're not really saving any money. So sometimes these Cadillac plans, they take care of a lot of the administrative tasks, and if we could work in some of the training to get some healthier. You know, habits going, so that saves you money long term.
We're definitely trying to do that. We're talking about possibly doing a couch to five K, which would be. Five K in town involving everybody. We just got uh Stairmaster uh through a grant, which is at our employee gym. Just located at the fire station. I was down there last week and it, I tried it out, and it's very nice. So we, we're definitely trying to get things like that. I was working with um the wellness rep. To think about some other programs, if I may be able to get any of them. In, I was here, some clean things, I think like that, to get people to be a little healthier. We're working on it.
All I got.
If you got, if anyone has any questions, I'll be very glad.
Interesting.
Thank you.
And I did tell Chief that's dead.
Thank you for joining us.
Chief.
Yes, thank you. I was gonna ask if you could introduce yourself, but you did, so thank you. I'm Fire Chief.
All right, I'm going to pull up. Chief's budget and then flip between a couple of things with additional service requests. Um so our department is pretty big budget. We are at one point nine million this year with all the addition, with the additional risks. Um so we're gonna go through salaries, um some additional increase, most of the additional increases are because of the digital F T E. Um Chief filled out these one pagers that I will, I'll pull up and we'll go through as we, as we get to them. Um and then we've also built in a little bit of cyclical capital replacement akin to how we do police cruisers, but for a fire department. Wanna, you wanna start off, Chief?
All right, so the, the big ask is the four full-time employees. Uh this would get us to initiate. One of the biggest things is currently we staff two hour max. Whenever someone's out, we have to be good. But instead of employees, it's honestly wearing a lot on the current employees, uh having the additional person. Open up the pool for people to take shifts. On top of that, it would provide a third person working the shifts. If, if there's no vacation time, so we could save some overtime by not having to fill every single time someone's out. But when they're there, it would be great benefits to the town. Right now, if we go out on medical, there's only two people working. Those two people are out of town, not available to respond for, on average. And I did the math last year, that equals up to twenty nine full days that there is not someone in the station. So that's, if there's another call, so we have to come home, which is average five, six minutes to get there, and get in the truck, then get to the call, so. Having that additional person benefit the community greatly. There's an OSHA law to in, to out. Before we go into any immediate hazards of life. Immediate danger to life and health, we need ten, four people on scene, two people to go in, two people to be outside. That's not just fires, it includes C O emergencies, which we had one at four o'clock tonight. Which there were, happened to be three working, so I was able to respond, and that was, I made the. Uh if it wasn't for that, technically, they wouldn't have been able to go inside of the building to mitigate the hazard until someone else got there. Um we have been filling, trying to fill weekdays with part-time members. Not too many people are taking it, so maybe two times a week, we've been filling it lately. Uh that was in the part-time much last year. So if we were to get the additional staff, we would have four on duty. With that part-time, if it's taken, so that allows us to have two in, two out all the time during the day. It gets us closer to meeting the F P A standard, which is nowhere in time for us, cause it is. For a low hazard incident, we would need fifteen people on scene within eight minutes. We can't even get to most of our get in eight minutes, so getting fifteen people there is a struggle, but we. As long as we show up, I think it's a big accomplishment for that. And that's all I have for the full-time employees.
I, I think one point that the chief made that kind of clicked for me is that our, our minimum staffing is our maximum, or our maximum staffing is our minimum staffing right now. And so the way the chief does his five, his overtime budget is, takes all of the time that each individual is allowed to take off sick. Vacation, professional development time, and rightly assumes that they're going to take that time throughout a year. We wouldn't, the way this budget is presented as a requested, it assumes that for this third person, um but we wouldn't have to do that, we can float down. So it's a, it's not cost savings to overtime, it is a decreased increase to overtime. Um but I still think it's an important way to think about the staffing model, that it's not just bolting on one hun, you know, hundred percent additional cost for. Then there's the small incidentals, which I'm not gonna pull up those things, but like increased clothing allowance and that kind of stuff by additional folks.
Reduced medical costs because less stress.
Could be, uh less injuries as well, because if you have the third person working, there's more people to carry patients out of buildings.
Taking over. Yeah, I mean, I hear in your voice when you first, when you first sat down, like, so is, if everybody, all your staffs out in a circle and said, we have four more people here, unless it would be this much better, they would all say that?
Forget the number, but there's been quite a bit of order-ins recently, so if someone calls in sick, or if they take a vacation, they're paid time off. If people don't wanna work, we have to, we have to have two people on it all the time, so we have to force people to work.
So it's like you know they're in town, and you order them in.
It, it, there's a revolving list.
That sounds like it sucks.
It does, and my previous job, it was very, very tough. It's starting to trend that way, but here, but it's pretty good so far.
Okay, but that's just because of luck.
It are, we do not have a sick time issue, that's.
It's my first question to ask you.
Our people do not usually use their sick time, so that's a good thing. It's great not saying that, if they keep getting, they might start.
And then it becomes, so as I've seen in other fire departments and the sheriff's office and correctional officers, uh once that snowball starts going, and you start getting people forced in. And that burns, that, that burns them out, and then they use their sick time last minute, because they don't wanna work, you know, three twenty-four hour shifts in a week, and then that burns somebody else's time, is forced on all the time, so. Um getting ahead of that is important, because if it takes a full year or two of a budget cycle to, to fix that, once it's a problem, like it's gonna be a really painful problem for them. For this, for the staff, for the residents, for the, those receiving service.
Last year, you talked about going for a grant. Um did we apply for that grant again this year?
I'm sure it's worth it. Are you concerned?
Yep.
Big enough staff towards getting the. So they don't consider people that staff, it's firefighters. So their goal is to get staffed by ready.
Yeah.
So if you staffed the humans, there's still zero people on the edge, so you die, or a lot of people to show they're working towards meeting the standard.
Okay, so this is one step in the direction of possibly being able to bring on additionals.
That's interesting.
And he, these four F T Es, what positions would they be?
They would be, I was, I wanted two permits, two, or two bases, so the difference is about a ten thousand.
So four cost roughly three hundred thousand dollars in base salary.
I mean, when, when I think about it, I don't, I, I look at more this, how would we, how do you fund it? I don't think you can just do this type of thing, you said in the operation, it's more overall. When we went from on-call to full-time, we didn't do that, we kind of went down a spiral budget issue decades ago. But I, I would just ask, in terms of historically, our, what's our current head count for our department compared to five years ago? Is it higher or lesser?
On paper, probably a little higher.
Yeah.
Uh we have, I think, five years, Chief has some, five, half career, some part of seven career right now. Uh the on-call department, on paper, it's about twenty one, realistically, it's probably seven. That's one of the bigger issues with it, because we don't have a very reliable on-call staff.
A lot of incident count.
It's a count, we ten to eleven percent increase every, we're on forty four calls this year, a little more than last year. Just keep getting this year.
Did forty four calls year to date?
Yes, addition.
Addition.
Calendar year.
We're, yeah, we're up over two hundred calls this year.
So what, what is, what is the capacity of our, our staffing in terms of, because I mean, you made a point of saying if um. If there's a call, you're out for an hour, you know, and right now, you only have two ones, so basically, for an hour, you're. You can't, you can't have redundancy, so what, I would better, wanna, better understand from a process standpoint, what the capacity is. In terms of call, how many are called versus are they, are, is it a single thread, things like that, so.
So this year, we have two. Two hundred and forty or so. Type of things, calls. The number's not perfect, the way that it tracks it, if there's a call, that comes, they can't really respond, but.
So, so one of the challenges is gonna be, when you think about, same way we've moved from an on-call department to a full-time department, to increasing staff full-time is. If we were to go to the floor with this, and I do think more, this type of increase in operational, right, there's more to this than just the staffing. Because you're gonna have space issues potentially, which you'll probably get into at some point from a capital standpoint, equipment, things like that, so this is, this, the big piece of the puzzle. But there's more to this, and, and I guess.
Uh for the space, uh for the space right now. Uh, for the space, uh, for the space right now, we, we're able to move things around, actually moved to a smaller office, we moved. The tenants into a different office, and that's now their dorm.
Yeah, yeah.
So now we have three.
To me, this is a big, to someone who's Jason, I'd only just move things around. If we're making, to, 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 to this department, you're going to add four FTEs, and you're juggling space. And you, you've already put in capital asks around, structure and building, what is the whole picture like? How does mutual aid work, coverage, how does mutual aid, how does on-call work into your staffing in the sense of, give the taxpayers an understanding of. How the fire department works in order to understand, to be able to, oh, I get it now. You two in, two out, I know that. And that may or may not include mutual aid for up in Oxford or somewhere. So understanding the, the, a comprehensive use, like, come, I would love to get a, a set. Next, another agenda item some point, sit down, what's the overall vision that you have? How do all these things fit together so we can actually make a case?
Alls were paid for by another town.
Yeah, or, or, or how much does mutual, you know, mutual aid cover the two in, two out dynamic, because we only got two on-call?
Yep.
Right? And are we in a position to help other towns by increasing our staffing? And do they have the same challenge that we have, right?
So everyone's getting this.
Yeah.
We actually provide. More so, a lot of them rather be taken.
More medical than fire, you think correctly, so?
More so, yeah, but that's our group, it's like seventy percent EMS. Overall, it's probably the same. So we, we do provide other towns a lot of help for mutual aid, because if we need it, we can call them.
Yeah, but, but I think that, that's it, that is a. And that's an operational dynamic that people need to understand, you know, so it's a message about our, about how do you support. The region, and, and how does your staffing ask better prepare us to help in order to get help, right?
So is the building able to house the additional FTEs and appropriate? So the biggest additional add is also in the equipment pieces, as Mike brought up, right?
Yeah.
That's added in here to a soon.
Yeah, they are. Well, it's the, built into the forty thousand dollar capital cost that we made.
Okay.
Previous years that was paying for a fire engine, but due to our bug, we don't have that cost. We, we're building it in that, we're just going to replace that every eight years or so. We're just going to continue that.
Yeah.
We're in a fairly good position with all of our apparatus right now, thanks to a lot of our funds. So we put in the, keep the forty thousand dollars in town, get the cycle going, replace current here, so. In past few years, we've been pretty good getting grants for the year.
Yeah.
Which may or may not be continuing after those years.
I want to say something here about this bottom line number that, um, Mike Goddard had asked me about before. Um, and it didn't come up in the previous two, because we didn't have the salary lineups. So the FY twenty-five adopted budget is not the FY twenty-five revised budget. So it does not have the additional special town meeting appropriations or transfers from reserve into salary lines. So if you look, um, at salary lines and see a seven percent increase from twenty, it's because the four percent COLA for fiscal twenty-five is not in our adopted budget. Uh, and the reason we have the adopted budget here and not the revised is because our reporting tools in Springbrook are limited. So this was the most, um. Uh, the, the report and the data out that I trusted the most in the revised budget was, was a little wonky. So when you see a, you know, six hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase here between fiscal twenty-five and fiscal twenty-six. That's because the salaries and wages is actually, you know. Thirty-five thousand dollars higher than, than positive in here.
Are we going to be able to hire FTEs, is that talent pool exist?
It's, the pool's fairly shallow, but I think we're, the department is heading in a good direction.
If you're hiring more women, are we going to be able to support women in the. Stepping quarters, so.
I think we have three, completely separate stepping quarters, two bathrooms, uh, we don't have any mixed use.
And the salary budget also in, includes an increase for part-time rates, very correct.
Yes. But the, the on-call staff gets paid very poorly. Um, the on-call firefighters get paid like sixty dollars an hour, so presented a, a. Scale, salary scale to Jeremy that would increase it to a more.
Reflective, reflective of the work being.
Yeah, it, there's a lot of departments where they have noticed that their call pay is an issue. People are never so, joining call departments, which is strange nowadays, so.
Yes, it's in the study.
So people not all professionals are following that.
She wants another iPad, but I think we can fold that, fold that.
So, so, yeah, so we've talked about four additional, uh, FTE. What, what would two do? So, for example?
We're going to obviously do more with the, if we get two, we would be able to staff through the shift for. Four out of the seven days, so there'd be three days where it would still be at two.
Maybe your overtime would be higher.
What was that?
But your overtime would be higher.
Slightly, yeah, because those three days would be able to drop down.
Right.
Are you able to schedule for busier times of the week or they're all the same?
The, the union contract has.
So, yeah, to remind everyone, the fire department works twenty-four hours, um, they're on a forty-nine day schedule table, is that right?
Yes, it's, it's an interesting schedule, it's, we have to call them ending, building on our, our scheduling. With our app that we have, uh, it's, seven employees can cover the. All of the days of the week, working forty-eight hours a week, most fire departments are like forty-two hour a week. So it would take eight to cover it, but they rotate more, it's more consistent, so that's why it's forty-nine, it's seven, seven.
Is forty full-time? When do you hit overtime? Is it forty?
Eh, after their scheduled shift, so it'd be after forty-eight.
After forty-eight, okay.
They're excluded from the, the.
Okay.
Schedule shifts.
I'm just having trouble following the reasoning on the overtime.
Yeah, two, two, four hours.
Not reducing when you have four people, that's.
So, I guess there are times when you would want, so if you've got three on a twenty-four hour shift and somebody's out. Um, we can increase, you know, the on-call, the part-time folks, um, during the day to keep us at. At three or four in this scenario that you're talking about, um, or perhaps there are particularly busy times where we would fill that third person because of. Because of the increased service delivery, uh, but you wouldn't be obligated to. Um, and the chief would have the decision if it comes down to voluntary overtime or forced overtime, to not force somebody in. Right now he doesn't have that.
That would be the biggest, we would have to force people. That's it.
But if, if folks wanted to pick up the overtime and the chief saw value in the additional service, then you would have to fill out.
So the shifts would stay the same, there'd just be more than be able to. Correct, there would be, there, there would somewhere two twenty-four hours, just have.
We'd have the appropriate amount of people in the building for more hours of the day.
And is leadership traditionally the, the fourth? That, it was traditionally that you were the tenant covering the fourth?
Yeah, the, the, yes.
Just trying to get at she's probably not working for you.
Current law, yeah.
So there, there would be incremental benefit adding one. Whether it's served, because we had this conversation a year ago, and it was more of a, one's not going to get us what we need.
So that was with the grant, it would be.
Right.
But that's generally seamless.
But if we, if we did added one incrementally. So adding.
Subsequent years.
That would, there'd be a benefit there.
Yep. Adding any staff would be able to.
Because that, that would, that would lead me towards not quickly saying we'd need an override. If you didn't continually increase over a period of years, you can kind of absorb that more if you plan for it.
Yeah, but for, call rate goes up ten percent a year, four years, adding one year.
Well, if it's a ten percent increase on one call a year, so. The same, percent, no, percentages, you know, we say that a ten percent increase, like, but what's the base, what's the capacity extent? We just need to understand, but I'm, I'm curious, but you know, if four is the right number, the question is, I didn't get there.
So the, the, the other personnel ask that's not in this budget request from either police or fire is right now. Uh, the fire department's executive assistant sits at the police station. Which means, um, when they go on calls, which require the chief to respond to, they leave and lock the door at the fire station, there's nobody there. Now, I, not the most foot trafficked place, um, in town, um, but we have, we have an unstaffed public safety building in the middle of. Weekday, um, so, uh, the workload at police, um, necessitates. You know, there'd be more than one FTE there, um, for their coverage too. So a future ask from fire and police, I imagine is going to be for. The executive assistant to go back to the fire station, and we'll talk about space and how to accommodate that. And then have, uh, an additional administrative assistant, so not this same, um, salary level. Uh, staff the police department to ensure coverage there in the way that right now, the fire department executive assistant is, is that. I know there's a, a history of funding that position through dispatch savings, and that's why it's construed the way it is right now. Um, but as we're moving towards a, um, towards a fully staffed fire department, having an executive assistant there Monday through Friday is. It's part of them. That's not in the system.
I have a question, certainly the grid, going back to them for a second, so you mentioned there was no way that people could have that based on. We had, this four obviously gets us to a position where I'm assuming. Get us what, closer than we may have been shot at getting.
Yep, yep.
But based on, I don't know if you, but communities that did get that grant, um, not comparable size, but similar, let's say. Did, did any get, grants given to communities similar to us, I guess is what I'm asking you.
The closest one I can say would be Dudley, Dudley got it probably two or three years ago, they added.
This one just got it this year, they added either eight or twelve as well, so that's, they're big jumps, they, they get the grants. Boston was starting to get it.
I, I do think that there is a general capacity demand analysis that would benefit everybody in the town, I think. I understand the need and sympathize with the, the need. Um, I just think of all of the other asks that are coming on town warrants with debt exclusions and, uh, you know. Possibly other fiscal cliffs that are showing up for fifty percent of our budget. Like, I feel like there's going to be a lot of new additional assets that are just, you know, going to start building and building and building. And while I agree, something like this probably should be taken to an override in relation to everything else.
Damn. Well, to me, it's, if you want to make that jump, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'd love to, to, you know, going back to, you just mentioned an additional resource as part of our plan. I need to come back and talk more broadly about the vision and your plan of where you want to be in, say, five years. You know, what is that end state for the fire?
He, he's already, he's already written and sent it to me, so that, that would be, we can, we can definitely do.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that's, I mean, this, this is part of that, but understanding the big picture is going to be helpful. Understand how do you, how and when, if we get there, what's the path, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, each FTE is a hundred-ish?
Like seven, it's the high seventies in base salary, so then once you get into.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Yeah, I think it's some devoted costs for different, will that come out of the study, you think, and get to. Based on position, I think it looks like.
I mean, all of our retirement contributions in Worcester County will be the same. If we have some that are in Norfolk County, and Norfolk County systems funded worse than the Worcester County system is, so those costs are going to be higher over there on the town side. Um, you want everyone offers in terms of a healthcare split, um, you can find the split numbers really easily.
Yeah, I'm not looking for call center to tell you. What I'm saying, once you get to compensation, like salary structure, everything, right, and we can build in. Fully loaded based around insurance and things like that, so, yeah, we've got that. Back in the day, we always did a hundred K was our FTE cost for the purposes of plan.
So, yeah, seventy, seventy-five in base, and like I said, the premium will range. Between low twenties and low thirties, so if you just think of thirty thousand as the number, so a hundred and five plus.
So contractual, even like turnout gear, understanding the, the impact of two sets of gear ultimately rotating. Does that start to?
Yeah, that, I've definitely done healthcare, because I haven't done that.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, yeah, that's, that's larger operating. But it's, it's one we're doing, that way the story is consistent, you can kind of get those numbers.
The numbers would be, including overtime in holiday for a paramedic would be ninety-seven without the benefits. The base would be eighty-seven, ninety.
For the, the, the end goal, I think you said was a staff twenty-one, your ultimate.
Don't recall, sounds.
Twenty-one full-time?
Yeah. The call department unfortunately is not the efficient now. People in this community aren't beating down the door and volunteering, basically volunteering as well.
Yeah, to get to, to get the four shift, we would need to add another four.
On top of the four being asked, yeah, so net increase of eight.
Yeah, four.
So four shifted your ideal state.
And the likelihood of being able to get a grant to maybe get there goes up if we were to add on the additional four.
It's a great.
But what if we just asked for eight? Oh, well, no, because we.
So those grants, they only pay the first three years, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a sugar.
Yeah, that was the point we made up when we talked, first talked about the grant was, okay, that's, that's great, was a grant ends, but you also mentioned that. People do apply and get rollover continuous grants, right, so, um. But the reason why we wouldn't be able to go for the full eight for the grant is, what I just heard, is we don't have a base foundation that needs threshold to apply and receive any grant. So therefore, we need to take a step in the right direction on our dime in order to apply for the grant for.
But I also heard that you don't get the grant, I asked for four, you need to ask for eight. That's what I'm saying, so it's the ask, not the base, so we ask for eight, to have to kill, well, we get to twenty-one, and she's happy for that.
And, and then we, we, we've kicked a big problem down the road three years from now, assuming that we aren't able to continually get grants, but.
Yeah, the way we would have to, because I just kind of whispered over here, like, that's a, that's a sugar high for three years, right?
Yeah.
You kind of have to, whatever week, in this scenario where we get eight, we're some firefighters. Whatever you can afford each year, the budget, we would put a reserve for future fire, or sorry, I call it spacer of sorts.
Yeah.
Roll it over to free cash every year, don't let that get eaten up by anything else, and increase that every year, so as we get to year three, then we could flip the switch, or year four, we can flip the switch.
Yeah, it's three years to get a baseline that allows you to kind of get to a steady state.
Yeah.
Be challenging.
So the reason we need to get the grant for the four is twofold, one, we ha- we don't have a foundational base. That is close enough to NFPA standards in order to.
Didn't show the progress yet.
Right, yeah, and our ask wasn't big enough?
They don't tell you the right one, that's why you can read it.
Okay, yeah.
If he's twenty-one, the, the standard we're trying to get to, that's.
So I don't remember exactly, I just stole it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he wrote this email since September, so.
Or, right.
It, 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 uh, includes a day shift fire prevention officer, um, so that's.
Yeah, I know, I'm just asking, what is the number, twenty-one was the number you want to get to. I'm asking, what is that federal, whatever that standard is you refer to, what is that number? That's.
It's four per piece of.
So if you want to keep changing the context, is it four per shift or four per piece of apparatus?
The NFPA's. The goal of getting fifteen to the scene within eight minutes.
Or fifteen, difference in mutual, mutual aid too.
It could.
That gets to that bigger pitch under, because we're a small town, we can't do this by ourselves.
Everyone else is in the same situation.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, how do we, you know?
It's it's why many other areas of the country have county government. And not three hundred fifty-one individual cities and towns that have to. After that. And mutually is great, but you have to have the staff. To initiate the call and get there, that's the standard, because it's the idea is really trying not to have anybody die. In the process of doing their job. It's problematic.
You have to move the calls data from different towns, understand the staffing coverage. The, I don't know if you guys share that data or not.
I do get it.
Those more budget stuff, and you pull, looks like you pulled out the supplies, a lot of supplies.
Yeah, that happened last year.
We, yes, that's. We get reimbursed by the state for medical costs. So it's a lot easier to track if we keep our medical costs separate from everything else.
Maybe it's really a long one, okay? And nothing on gas and oil, that's all good.
Getting electric vehicles.
Gashing.
Right.
Maintenance, we have a lot of newer equipment.
Yeah, the most of the equipment is fairly new, so our vehicle needs to be seen to increase it much stuff here.
And uh, building maintenance, we um spent a bunch from that central account that we funded in a, at special town meeting, that's taking care of a couple of things at the fire department. Um.
There's a couple on the capital side, but like.
Yeah, that's what.
You already covered that?
Well, we did the, we we didn't do the actual doors, conflated the two, we did the motors. Security.
Yeah, yeah, you could walk up to the doors.
Not anymore, not anymore.
It was the motor itself, it would just freeze spin backwards, just once you start it, it just.
And who's monitoring the cameras there? That internal or is that?
It's internal.
So when there's nobody there, there's nobody there.
Well, there is one camera that goes to the regional dispenser. You see where it's coming from?
Yeah.
They can see in there if you press.
Did the um, capital equipment line item, the forty thousand is turnout gear for this budget, have you, have you guys figured out how you're going to roll things in like those replacement, things like that, that? So we just replaced all the hose, right?
Correct.
But then the idea was different hose based on usage, just going to need to place in a different incremental time period. We talked about roll that into that line item too.
So this one is specifically for turnout, right now, this year, it would be for turnout gear, but down the road.
But we we would expect this probably line item somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty grand a year that would be used for different capital cyclical.
I thought that's what this exactly was, was.
It was specific to turnout gear, but then there'll be other types of capital line items that you're gonna roll into that same.
We'll want the forty grand for turnout gear every year and then. Yes, build these additional things into it.
You you don't need forty grand every year for turnout gear, you've got.
Eventually, we will get to a point where we won't need them.
Right, so you've got three cycles of forty grand based on the capital plan that should get you to where you wanted to be, unless we bring in more FTEs.
Yep, yep.
And then you should have a five to six year window, we start turning over the turnout gear again.
Every, every ten years.
Yes. And we started turning it over early, so at the end of three years, that's actually, you had, you had a two hundred fifty thousand dollar line item. At the end of ten years for the place all turnout gear, we pulled that up. Two. So then in three years, that'll be your tenth year, then you should have another seven years before you start seeing turnout. Turning over, right?
So we now track it with an app, it's all in there, so we're starting to build it out so that we can track it. Getting a handle on what we have.
Yeah, I'm just saying, those other things that if that app can handle it, probably all that is, you start to see a smooth.
Every single day is. Is the majority of the equipment that you get made in America, is it? Yes, uh, some of the turnout gear. Some of it's made in Mexico, some of it is made in. Actually, the hose that we just purchased is Canada. Kind of. Which it was a year delivery. Everything fires since.
Uh, consumables, um, so supplies versus medical supplies, I guess we're seeing a ten percent year-over-year increase, I would expect to see. Supplies going up if we're going more cost.
On the year.
So this is a future discussion, I'm not sure how much either board has had it, but having a dedicated ambulance revolving fund. Um, so right now, the medical billing for an ambulance is on a local receipt. Um, and it goes through the general fund, um, and then everything that we pay for the ambulance is also on the general fund. What a number of communities do is um, isolate the costs related to ambulance. Um, and put all the revenues, a portion of the revenue, depending on how they slice it into this revolving fund. And then similar to how we talked about trash, where you know, a surplus in the program stays with the program and benefits the program. Ambulance can have the same thing here, where we can build up a reserve um, in years where it's. Less or where it's more spiky, more bumpy, um, the reserve and the ambulance revolving fund can take care of that rather than seeing big spikes over here. Then the then the general fund doesn't get to enjoy the benefit of the surplus revenue at the end of each year of free cash, um, which is why, which is why I think it hasn't happened everywhere, um, but.
What do you do if the revolving fund gets overfunded by a large year?
So the way revolving funds work is that town meeting votes the expenditure cap each year, so if the expenditure cap is. Half a million dollars and the fund takes in a million dollars, that's okay, but you can only spend half a million of it without raising that cap from the legislative body. Um, so it would be about rightsizing it to begin with. It's not, you don't need additional, once you set that cap, you don't need an additional appropriation throughout the year, so. If the cap is five hundred thousand, the budget is four hundred thousand, they do collect six hundred, they can go and spend more on other stuff without an additional town meeting appropriation, waiting for free cash to be served.
So is that accurately tracked now? The app, it's the 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 revenue, the returns for the ambulance for all. Yes, yep, uh, we pay four and a half percent, our. Ambulance billing is paid out of our. Pretty much it. So we, we pay out, so the busier we are, more money comes out of ambulance. General fund, so that's where me and Jeremy had that conversation, because we had to move some stuff around last year, because. We had a pretty busy year where we collected a lot of revenue on it. We paid out a lot more than we wanted initially. So uh, everything, our bill company is very good at tracking everything. This morning, I asked the question, I had entire year's worth of billing. So it's our. Do you know how much more revenue you collected with the actual cost of the colony? And the number we actually.
Just partisan, because the whole idea of.
Revenue versus profit.
Basically. But. Yep, so we we built that every time it was a medical care, which was set by the select board in two thousand nineteen. And that doesn't mean that's what we collect, a lot of the insurance companies are only paying out a contract here right now. That goes back on to the patients. They don't pay it, we do have means of getting it, we haven't acted on that in many years, but part of the reason is because.
Yeah, so right now, you know, there's lots of variables to what like, what folk, what person is actually on responding, um, and their salary, how long stuff takes off. All, you know, whatever consumables we use on the run, but we bill at a flat rate, so there is another.
Wasn't it because we got, so there are times when we didn't always have a paramedic. That your basics are. And now we have paramedics, we have paramedics, we, but years we've dropped to be basically six hours. It's rare for around here, most departments will drop down. There are a lot of. Mutual aid goes to, because they call us, because they.
So do we build the same insured uninsured, everybody gets paid, everybody gets charged the same rate?
We have a VOS rate, an ALS one, an ALS two rate.
That's interesting, they not search.
Yep.
All right, and then my, then my.
And my, yeah, it's. While you in the ambulance, child is huge travel, transport. So it's fun to see you to the hospital, that's it.
So more discussions to come on the executive assistant and administrative assistant in Backfield and on the. Um, ambulance piece for English revolving fund for future budget years, uh, but just wanted to kind of telegraph a little bit of where we're at.
Is exactly, does this mean you need more space again?
No, I think we will be able to call her, she was there for a few months. Police station over the top. It worked. We make it work in front of.
It's one of those, if we get to that point, it's a good problem to.
Yeah, very.
Anything else, right, thank you so much for joining. Alright, we have those three presentations, I did want to check in about our, the future budget schedules, especially now that we have finance committee here. Um, so we have a few more meetings scheduled uh, with, so we have. Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, we have next Monday and then the following. Week for Wednesday as well, and I think one issue that's come up is, I know a couple of the select board members are not able to attend the meeting on the twelfth. Is that correct?
Is that Monday?
The Wednesday, the Wednesday, the. Right, so um, so one question is when we are going to, at some point, have sort of an overview meeting to discuss the whole budget, uh, after we've had all the presentations. So I wonder if we could talk about scheduling that now, when we have at least this number here. Um, when we would want to do that, um, and I don't know, Jeremy, if that's it, did you have a station like?
Yeah, we we talked about it in Podset.
Okay, so, I mean, I think the, it's. I guess I would like if we could do it after the twelfth, since we have a couple of members of the select board who are not able to join us on the twelfth, so whether we. Do it on the regular select board meeting, which is the following week on the nineteenth, or if we do it another night. Now, if, say, Bingcom, if any of you have uh, availability on the nineteenth.
Bingcom's uh, preference for our own committee meetings was on Tuesday evenings. Um, so from a Bingcom perspective, that would be first choice. Uh, we clearly were able to, most of us make, I think we're all here except for, um, make today work. So because of this being in March, my personal Mondays and Wednesdays have become more free. But I'll let everybody else speak to their availability, so.
Mondays, Wednesdays, well. This month.
Oh, uh, sorry, Wednesday, the nineteenth is the Misco seventh and eighth grade band concert.
Is that? You were scheduled.
That affects my schedule, look, hockey ended and I thought my life opened up, okay?
You know, when I started scheduling time with Mike to talk a few days ago, he's like, well, I have this chunk of hour I'm at hockey, this chunk of hour I'm at hockey.
You want to talk to me at night, I got plenty of time in a parking lot where I'm bored out of my mind, so.
Do you have any standing thing on meetings scheduled for this month?
Uh, no, we're more ad hoc with it and it was based off of how this budget schedule worked out, so all of the Tuesdays, we do Tuesday.
The eighteen? I mean, I. Can do that with, you know, notice I, yeah, teach in Boston on Tuesdays, but I can, if I know. If I know that I have to be back for a six thirty meeting, I can do it. So.
So this would be it's kind of the twelfth, in addition to the twelfth.
We're trying to accommodate the FinCom Tuesday night selection. Appreciate it.
Okay, so I think, I mean, it sounds like.
Of joint meeting. Yeah.
So so all five of the select boards available for Tuesday, the eighteenth, and then so what, what about the Bingcom is Tuesday, the eighteenth?
I'm assuming we should be available, so, yeah. Any comments online, Jack, I see you popped your camera on.
Yep. Eighteen or nineteen works here, thank you. Either one, thank you.
Yeah, it works for me, too.
And I think that that would be just focused on the budget overview making, uh, I I think we would be voting. That that would be the idea that we both committees would vote.
And uh, would we be having the discussion of, this is the proposal of what's in and out, these are the accommodations that have been made in order to get to a level budget, then voting on that. Final, because I think that was very valuable last year, and I think we had at least two meetings talking about options of.
Right.
What's in, this is what's out, this is.
So I guess that's a question for Jeremy, like, do you think that's a timeframe that you can work with for that?
Yeah, I mean, I could definitely have the like. Proposal of what a balanced budget looks like. You know, based upon these conversations and feedback and then my conversations with with folks. Um, I guess we can see if you can do it one night and if not, schedule a second one, having not gone through this process with this group before, I don't want to kind of over promise that we can do.
Usually super quiet, not a lot of discussion.
That could be a goal.
And actually, what what is um. I mean, what is our timeframe that we're working with in terms of, you know, we have to print up. There's a book that needs to be printed up, so like, what is, what is the date that we have to vote by?
Yeah, I'll I'll make sure I get that from. He's working with our printers and with Ellen for getting the warrant out and all, and all those sorts of things, um, which we'll talk about more on Wednesday, um, after our budget meetings, but um. I'll, I'll, I'll have a better number, I'll have a better date for you on Wednesday. Um, I will say. One thing I want to do slightly differently, um, I talked about this. In the run-up or after special town meeting is about kind of a citizen's guide to the budget and town meeting, so. Um, historically, it's been styled the FinCom book with a budget construed or presented by the select board with a FinCom. Uh, contextualizing letter in their vote and then the rest of the warrant behind it. Um, I've said this a million times, a warrant is really confusing for folks to read and know what's actually going on. Um, so I'd like to make a little bit more robust of a, of a book, not a full-on three hundred page budget, um, like some towns do. Um, but more like what Uxbridge does, uh, uh, um, if you recall, we made some for the moderators' walkthrough of special town meeting, was like a one pager with a little bit of explanation, the select board vote, the FinCom recommendation. So I want to kind of make that more robust, so all that's, that takes time to do. Um, and then have the FinCom report be a piece of this larger document, a standalone thing. So I'd be probably a week more than I otherwise would have to do something like that, um, because we're going to. Select board also doesn't, isn't the one who's sponsoring every article that's in the warrant, right, so um, we need to get the sponsoring entities' comments to be able to put.
Started receiving, excuse me, have we started receiving warrant articles?
Yes, a couple of backlog provisions, um. One from conservation, um, a couple from planning. You know, just the normal stuff we see every year, um, but not, not a ton. I've been surprised by some.
And the the schools will be.
Yeah, we have two.
School committee.
We have two from the schools, the two separate debt exclusion questions.
So what?
The, because the roofs have MSBA participation in it, they need to separate out the question from the rest of it. Which is good for the roofs, I think, but needs for us to project.
Uh, I mean, we need to also do the same if there's any other uh, financial impact warrant articles, so we need to make sure if you go through those. Be able to have time for us to go on our research. Uh, I believe I saw for. Is it? This Wednesday that you're giving a warrant discussion on the agenda?
It's on the agenda, yes, I don't know how long it is yet.
Yeah, so um, we haven't as, um. Board hasn't. the board hasn't discussed what is on the warrant yet, we haven't had a meeting that.
We just, yeah, we just opened it. I mean, not tonight.
Well, so I guess.
Yeah.
The question should be, should be, should it be a joint meeting for the budget presentation and warrant discussion? Next to each other, and then once that's complete, we can close. Our meeting.
Oh, certainly, yeah, I'm happy to, yeah, happy to do that, so I think we're, we're going to try to do most of, we're going to try to do the budget early, but we do have one hearing that needs to be at six thirty-five, but it's, it's the land use hearing, and it's typically, historically, it's about five minutes.
Yeah.
So that's the only thing that we need to have beforehand, so I think we should be, by six forty, we should be able to jump right into budget, and then we can go to warrant discussion so that you can be here for that as well.
Yeah.
That's this Wednesday.
Uh, where bylaws is all meetings have to do.
Some, yeah.
Select Ward will be here, the FinCom will be here as part of the joint piece of this, the especially budget presentations of the evening and the.
Great, so, all right, so it sounds like we're all due Tuesday, the 18th. And possibly we'll keep in mind that we may need another follow-up meeting as well, another follow-up joint meeting after the 18th as well.
I think it's, I think it's.
Likely.
Yeah, we likely will, but from a timing perspective, I was just thinking about it now, like, that if we finish it, sorry, if, if we have a vote on the 19th, that would be very helpful to me. If not, the week after was still useful, I have, you know, a couple of weeks to get the, get the documents together. And ultimately, a lot of the structure of the document is not going to change based upon the final vote, a lot of it.
Right.
The goal for the event is that we walk away understanding what a balanced budget looks like and what the ads or lack of ads are going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we walk away with that.
Yeah.
You're, you're good.
Yeah, and we're there's lots of important investments that folks are, folks are positing here, but really, a lot of the budget is already baked.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if we align on the ads that everybody agrees on coming out in the 18th, that's the most important thing, and then we can individually meet as committees and board.
I had initially talked about having select boards agenda be something, I talked, or select boards, can't say anything but agenda, I can say it's like with budget, to be part of the discussion tonight, so if you all are still up for a couple of minutes.
Sure, sure.
Um, so the select board salaries and wages, so this includes a couple of things that look different than the year prior. One, we've got a budgeted salaries at fifty-two point two weeks. A lot of times, communities will budget a, what's called a fifty-third week payroll in like an account kind of over here. So if you look at the number of weeks being paid in fiscal twenty-six for a five-day-a-week worker, it's fifty-two weeks plus a one additional day. So you actually take their weekly salary times fifty-two point two, that's going to be consistent throughout the whole budget. Additionally, there, so coming out of our call in central design study, we talked about an assistant town administrator for operations. I have that in here with a placeholder at eighty-five thousand dollars, having not gotten a call in the study back, but looked at some other communities. We're, so we're going to talk about requests, not recommendations, but considering it's the budget that I principally put together, I'll give both my requests and recommendations. So I have the, I have the eighty-five in here, I'm not going to recommend that as a, as a position to add. As we go through this, I with seventeen direct reports, I think it's important for the town to have, but in context of some of the other critical F T E asks, and knowing how much benefits are for, for a whole additional F T E. And also, quite frankly, I really don't like the optics of being here for seven months and asking for one full F T E in my office while we debate with the fire chief whether we can get to a safe staffing level for any of this. I don't, I don't love being in that position, so I have in here to show what that would cost and what a full-on fully staffed office would, or a fully staffed office it looks like, but ultimately, I'm not. The other thing that's in here is that everyone else has a three percent call, I have a two percent. So the percent's part of the side letter to ask for a three percent call for fiscal twenty-six. That is a much smaller.
The three percent call of everybody else has, that was negotiated through union negotiations?
Yep, and as well, as well as all the other.
Are you on the union?
I'm not, most certainly not. And this select board opened up all of the other non-union contracts to apply the same call to the non-union contracts as the union.
And I'd point out, you're not asking for the four percent?
Um, I signed.
For the first year?
Well, I started in fiscal twenty-five.
Okay, did you make that in?
I, I think you picked a number in between what the posting was and what I was currently making, just hadn't had.
I don't think it counted through, I'm sure on the four percent, so after he signed his contract, so we just went ahead and said, well, we're over the three percent in twenty-six.
Uh, but I only got two percent in twenty-six.
I know, but as did, I mean, your contract followed almost every other department. We adjust, we have to adjust yours to be fair.
That's. Some other increases are just kind of rounding stuff. Here is, we don't spend nearly as much, as, we haven't spent five thousand dollars. Uh, but meetings and dues, so this is built on sending the board, myself, and the executive assistant to connect three fifty-one, based upon the experience this year in terms of what, you know, rooms costs and how many folks went for how long. Different, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars to join the M M A, and then it's this kind of miscellaneous account that we funded additionally at special town meeting, so I could offer recently, M M A put out a leadership webinar that was truncated to like thirty people attending three different days. And I sent it out to everybody in town who supervised the staff. And said, it's forty dollars, the select board account will pay for it, like, please sign up if you're interested, you're interested in it, because I want to give folks that opportunity to take these small level that we didn't, we weren't thinking about a forty-dollar class when we did this budget last year. But that sort of flexibility to be able to continue offering folks.
But you can't offer that unless we're members.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Uh, acronym definitions?
Yeah, sorry. Uh, M M A is the Massachusetts Municipal Association, which is, provides an unbelievable resource to the town through these trainings, through retreats and food camps and legislative that you see, you know. It's, it is, it is the premier organization that municipalities in Massachusetts. Connect three fifty-one is what they recommend with their annual conference. And I C M A is the International City and County Management Association. So my contract says, provide for membership and that should the budget allow, so I in budgets. And then, like I said, I'll learn some latest trainings.
Can you add a note on the salaries line item of what the eighty-five? Because there is a big increase with no, no.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah.
What's our hearing cost? Is that mostly postage and?
That's advertising in the newspaper for public hearings. Because it'll run us, depending on the number of words, if we have a continuation that we also do later, it could be a couple hundred dollars per hearing. But we don't sniff five thousand dollars. And that's also somewhat of an optics thing, too, that if I'm going back to other departments and saying, you're trying to right-size pieces of your budget and move stuff around where, where it rightly should be, or if I say, if you're looking for an increase in, in this one, like, meet me halfway with decreases and stuff you're not using, I also want to apply that to this.
One thing we talked about last year is certain things like supplies and anything that's, you know, even facilities. Have you looked at consolidating that to single line items, so there's more?
Okay, it's a question.
Is it a lot?
A lot, not all of it.
Not all of it. Um, so we report out on Schedule A at the end of the year to D O R. And there is a level of specificity that is, that is useful in doing that report, so we vote the budget salaries and supplies, salaries and expenses, I mean, which is great, because it allows anything that, talked before about those codes, anything that's not a, everything that's a five-one is voted in salaries, everything that is five, two, three, four, whatever. So it allows flexibility for department heads to go between and go negative five hundred here, as long as there's a five hundred balance here. So we've given that, we've given department heads the flexibility of of, as if they were all combined to a larger pot, but then we've kept the reporting capability of a little bit more specificity, so we, we can do the Schedule A.
Yeah, I'm just saying about in terms of buying bulk, things like that. So, so everybody literally was buying their own stuff, so you have this, you might have a million pens across the town, but you didn't only need it a hundred, right?
Yeah, but that almost, that almost certainly happens, there's a lot of balkanization and how we do stuff, so, yeah. Future area of study, for sure.
The pen example was just for examples.
Next time I need a pen, I'm going to this.
This supply of pens.
There's a million pens that say, this vendor was at connect three fifty-one. Reserve fund, so we, it's been this number for a while, it seems. So I talked to the chair, and the goal rate, seventy-five thousand dollars, it equates to point three percent of budget. We, we just talked at the end of last week, so I've hardly gone through kind of past years, what we end up spending as a reserve, so why I like this line, and I think why you should like this line, is that if it's padded with assumptions, it takes votes of both of these boards to move it out of there to go to anywhere where you're. And otherwise, it sits there unexpended and falls through your free cash, so if, if this is overfun, overfunded on a year-to-year basis, which we're not really at the risk of at twenty-one thousand dollars, it kind of insulates you in almost guaranteed free cash of whatever that overage is.
Well, and we bumped the adjusted twenty-five budget, we bumped to sixty-five. Or sixty.
So.
That's our goal, whether we actually end there, we're not sure yet.
Yeah, we had turned that goal out there. You know, recommendations from previous town administrator.
We're getting better, the point three percent you put out there?
No, the seventy-five K was a base on general best practices. In terms of the size.
But the budget last year started seventy-five, but the balance we reduced, and then we refunded right in the fall.
I think that's something.
Yeah, yeah. It's another lever.
Um, our accounting, contractual accounting went up a hundred dollars a month. So, so that is.
Um, do we want to go back up to the FinCom?
Yes, sorry.
So I guess paying for the, the FinCom book. When I actually don't, the, the salaries and wages, I know I'm not getting a salary.
Honestly, this is, this is terrible, so I, I didn't really, I thought of FinCom just as their reserve fund account and didn't think of the expenditures here, so you and I didn't talk about this?
Yes. Yeah.
That's, it's not.
Yeah, so, you know, if you want to give me a salary, great, but so I'm actually not sure where that goes to, and I believe we were still using the FinCom book printing from that line, I'm totally positive, because we haven't moved that from which line in the reports yet, so I have not been a part of the FinCom where we have actually had our own responsibility to do this. And then meetings and dues, again. I'm not going to any meetings and paying any dues on anything, and I don't believe anybody else on the board is, or on the committee is. Speak up if you've set up something you didn't want me to what?
I mean, we went into the salaries, because we didn't have that. And this isn't something that I pull from salary. So.
Well, yeah, well, that's what I was wondering, I know there has been a question about having a clerk to do minutes for FinCom. So I have no point.
Yeah, Joey had talked about what the previous finance director talked about putting that back in there, and I think we, we put that in there, and it clearly hasn't happened. So we are getting by at the moment by Billy's gracious stepping up to take minutes for us as a, as a secretary, so that, that is working right now. I think if the expectations need to start going beyond that, we should talk about having specific staff, but.
The hit, sorry, I might jump in, the history of that started twenty years ago, like when the finance committee was actually doing a lot more work, budgets. And it came to the attention of being the chairman. You have seven members, one of them's trying to keep notes, which takes away that thing. Time to concentrate around what it's there for, not to take notes, but vote and be part of the discussion on the budget. As the years have gone by, finance committee is not as is not dependent upon to put the budget together, and we've stepped into the twenty-first century. I agree, yeah, this gentleman, five, select me. So it's up to, I think if we're going to start doing more work, yeah, I think we should probably have a clerk.
Yeah, I agree, but I think based on the current operating model, I think we are good, and I'd rather save the, save the town two thousand dollars. But I think we would want to reopen the discussion if there's any change in operating model as we talk about any new ways of work.
That's maybe something to tie into the revitalizing of committees, review of committees, is how that, what's the support required for all these volunteer committees? You know, not just FinCom, but in general, is there a shared resource or resources that can support these committees, we want people to join?
Yeah, previous town administrator did say that there was supposed to be some extra support provided, but never alerted the person that they were supposed to actually support us, and when I asked about it, it was just this type of thing, so. It's been a complete mess my entire, only short three years.
Jeremy.
Yeah, and if you're going to do.
Sessions.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk.
Yeah.
The assessors will be here, the finance department. So five hundred dollar increase in postage. And then what this is, this line on salaries is the treasurer collector and the assistant treasurer collector. The assistant treasurer collector is thirty hours a week in the, in the treasurer collector's office, and ten hours a week in the town clerk's office as assistant town clerk. So that salary split between these two here. Previously, F Y twenty-five adopted budget included a finance director, treasurer collector, and assistant treasurer collector, and I believe there was money in there for municipal clerk for a few hours, twenty hours a week, maybe, so that's what that drastic reduction is there, is through, through attrition. But the rest is, is level, is level funded. Legal, lawyers are terribly notorious for billing so slowly that, you know, if we, I, I track, you know, who has items with legal. We have quite a few right now, and you've been putting in quite a bit of work on real estate stuff for us, but we're, we're nowhere close to having spent forty thousand dollars so far this year. But it's tough to kind of predict when big things are going to hop up, so I had suggested, recommended a uh, level funding here, and the same as FinCom, we're never going to transfer out of this, we can just, it will fall through free, FinCom reserves, it will fall through to free cash. Information system technology, I'm not quite ready to explain. So here's the town clerk. This seventy-four is based upon the salary that was passed at special town meeting, and then increased three percent. And this is, like I said, the assistant town clerk, ten hours, fifty-two. The, there's an increase in the meetings and dues here from from the town clerk's office, and that has to do, one, with having an assistant town clerk, she wants to be able to send us stuff, but also. Going through these now, because it's I think we can go through these pretty quickly and not have to. So attending town clerk association conference, just to do her hours, hotel cost of increase, and then mileage for one in Maine. And included monies for the new assistant to attend three mentoring sessions through the Mass Town Clerk Association. So I can give you the actual breakdown of what each individual conference costs, but in order to kind of staff, or in order to train new staff. She's added a couple of additional things. Share this document as well. Read everything on the team. And again, I'm going through some stuff here that I, I, I think is. Straightforward and doesn't require additional department head input, but the reason I'm doing it tonight, while we still have other meetings is if there is something here you want to call the town clerk in to talk about or the treasurer collector. Let me know and we'll invite them. Elections, if you've done these budgets before, you will know how kind of cyclical this is. It's not, you know, we're at a presidential, which increased presidential primaries and all that. So we don't have that this year. So this kind of gets ratcheted down and eaten to measure and then. Expect that to go up again as, as we go through the election cycles. Conservation will be here. What we didn't talk about when John was here. The admin position was budgeted. In multiple places in ways that added up to more than one point O FTE. She's not being paid more, she's being paid for the hours she's worked, but it was put in building, planning and zoning. So.
So we just saved a bunch of money.
So we just fixed the glitch, so to speak. And. She was here today, she should be here tomorrow. Yeah, so we just, so that's what that big kind of jump here is, and same thing for hearings. That's, that's. That's there, posting in the newspaper. This public building and maintenance, this is what we talked about. This line here where I'm highlighted fifty thousand dollars, this is where we added an additional, what I call like central building maintenance, so we're able to find things like the garage door openers. And security cameras and stuff that pops up in the middle of the year, we're able to, we got an insurance payout. For blowing mini split compressor here, but it doesn't quite meet the cost of what a new one is. So this account fills it in. And as we go through our capital plan and we get submissions that don't quite get to our twenty-five thousand dollar, you know, threshold, we can address them year over year here through the general funding.
Why did Tom Hockney go down?
Arithmetic was. Different. So. First one I can talk about police, building inspector, I will get back to as well. And then Dan will be here for, for this. Norfolk Aggie. Took a tuition vote, it's up a little bit, but I don't know how many of our kids are going to be there and likely won't know for many months. We have two seniors who graduated, six returning, I'm not sure how many freshmen are going to be there. So I took FY25 and added ten percent. As our, as our placeholder there. Blackstone, BBT will be here Wednesday.
I know at least two applying.
BBT will be here Wednesday, talk about snow and ice. Talk about waste and water with them here, Board of Health here, Council on Age is coming. Veteran services, I have been informed that our veteran service agent is retiring. He's well past retirement age and he's done a great deal of work for the town. A three thousand dollar stipend for the amount of work that this position puts in for the town. Not sure we can find somebody competitive in it. So I have dealers out to some other surrounding communities who share agents and we can key off of their availability and stipend level. So again, I have a placeholder in here because. This was a gentleman who was, you know, using his own printer paper and meeting veterans at Muffin House because he didn't have an office here. So. Try to professionalize or try to support that office a little bit. Veterans benefits, just a quick note on that, this is chapter one fifteen benefits. So this is for economically disadvantaged veterans in the Commonwealth and municipality. It's kind of last in the batting order in terms of. Social programs and programs available to folks. So once they go, once folks go through every kind of state and federal program. And their income and wealth levels still don't hit a number, this is where chapter one fifteen kicks in. We get revenue from the state for it, but it's essentially at a two-year lag. And we don't quite know. So thirty-five is probably a little bit too much. I have to sit down with the veterans agent and really talk through what our one fifteen program looks like, but. We'll likely be able to share some of that there, but there is a corresponding. Library and rec will be here, parks will be here. These are our debt numbers, seven hundred thousand in principal, hundred and seventy-four thousand in long-term debt. Or interest on long-term debt. These numbers are state assessments and charges, these are driven by our cherry sheet. So these are just straight from Governor's One and. That's likely what we'll end up printing with. I don't think we'll have the house budget in time. And then our assessment from Western County Retirement, reasonable thirty thousand dollar assessment we can, we can. Absorb.
Why wouldn't we pay it by July one?
So we pass a twenty-four million dollar budget, we don't have twenty-four million dollars in the bank on July first. So that's. Yeah, so cash flow issues. So there are, there are municipalities that have passed short-term state house notes. That go from, you know, June twenty-eighth to July second, just to be able to, to fund your operations and, and make cash flow considerations. So we're. Nowhere in the realm of that. So we have the ability to wire out a million dollars on July first, but not everybody's. We had to split it up in city about a borrow, one of my years there, but that was a, like, eight million dollar payment. Workers' comp unemployment are doing okay right now, but that's some of the similar stuff to legal, you can have one thing kind of blow up on you mid-year. Health insurance we talked about. Life insurance, same thing. Medicare to premiums to keep up with salaries. Other insurance, so this. This was funded at seventy-five thousand dollars in FY25 budget and sixty thousand dollars in FY24 budget. Both of those numbers are understatements and we had to use extraordinary budget measures to, to be able to fund those. In FY25, I tried to do the same thing we did in twenty-four and Maya wasn't having any of it, but we already did that last year, like pay, pay up. So. We had to fund it out of the select board account and then we came to special town meeting and put that money back into the select board account. Or put that money where it should be here in, you know, the expense of. So this. This was my placeholder from them, after talking to them and adding ten percent. So I'll try to refine that in as we get closer if they give us. So this is our, like I said, liability insurance for police and fire. So that's my best estimate right now, but as I know more, I'll do that. And then these two insurance numbers, same sort of thing, performing well now, but should we, should we get access to them from what's happening? Anyway, so those are all the kind of like catchalls, the stuff that happens in the budget that takes up a bunch of our money that we don't spend too much time talking about because our hands are tied on.
Can you jump back to fire and walk us through the ambulance line item, the lease, because I know we, it was there, I don't think we ever talked about it.
We did not. So it was refunded in twenty-five. So we're about to take. Delivery of it. So this is, this is, Chief Bang was notes, it's budget number adjusted to correctly reflect the lease schedule delivering April or May. And it's a five point six nine percent annual leasing cost. That we got from them in the middle of January. So I shouldn't say it was incorrect, it was, so that's what we see down community capital equipment, I believe it was budgeted. But we, we should have it as a, as a lease payment. We didn't know the exact schedule. So this is based upon the exact delivery date.
And is that going to be outfitted like with all the supplies and everything? Because that was a big back and forth last year's budget. Supplying a second ambulance, which I guess we haven't even taken possession of because we're going to take possession of it in the spring.
So, yep, we're not, not going to have two ambulances in service, we're not going to stop. For a couple of reasons, one being we. To do it. So I'll, I'll see if it comes with our initial set of supplies. I believe the. You know, I know all the like systematic components are built into the lease, but in terms of the consumables, I don't.
So we, we can't run two at the same time? But we'll have two physical ambulances?
So there are, we didn't talk with the chief about it, but there will be two ambulances, one will not be. On a day-to-day basis, service-ready and kitted out with, with consumables, but should. And the first ambulance be out of service for a prolonged period of time. Bring the other one to service.
And I can guarantee you that the ambulance does not come stocked with supplies.
Oh, it doesn't. And last year's budget had a line item to stock, two fully stocked ambulances where we said, well, if you're not going to use them, aren't those supplies gonna? You need those supplies, if you use more than the time type of thing. So I just wanted to clarify how that's working and then.
Yeah, so we are, we are, we are not outfitting two ambulances.
And the, the current ambulance we have, is that bought and paid for?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
It felt like it was when we had this discussion. Yeah, I'd just be curious to understand the idea of two lease payments, if one's in operation, it wants backup, does that make sense?
Yeah.
You know, or if one's paid for and we're getting a new one and the current one's going to be sort of on the side and we've already bought and paid for it, that makes more sense to me.
Yeah, like ours.
I will. I will find out.
The lease interest rate, is that?
I can say that's, that was the plan. But I don't know, I don't remember if. It was something about the first, the first lease. Didn't have to be made or was not made. So there might be an overlap, but. That was the plan.
I mean, overlap's cool unless, unless it's over.
Can I ask a question? Might be something stupid.
And I might make up the answer if I don't know.
I can tell if you make.
Yeah, I know you can.
Where is this ambulance going to be parked?
At the fire station. Probably under their overhang on the side.
So it's going to be outdoors.
I, I don't know, there may be, there's enough, I believe there is enough depth. In the bay. Stick it in the back. Too deep.
Think you can find that up on? Because they have an ambulance in reserve. Sitting outside in the woods. It's like having a second car. Outside parked in the woods. Now, is this like an ambulance that's going to be. Registered in short, ready to go at any moment?
Yeah, we'll, we'll likely keep it on.
And if it's not stocked, that means. The label involved, move everything out of that stock it.
I'm sure they would have to. Again, I'm just making this up from assumptions.
And that's why I'm continuing, right. Want to find out, I mean.
If we were to get him for FTEs, would he run into the ambulance?
I don't think, I don't think so.
Just curious. We need to get him to eight to.
Yeah, it, it would be, we wouldn't. Bring the ambulance on kind of for an hour or two for a thing. My anticipation would be if the other ambulance needed transmission work and was out of service for a week and a half, then we would bring a second.
Yeah, the, the, my memory was that the new ambulance that was ordered. You know, it was gas, not diesel. It's a much better. Better option than what the previous one that was purchased. That also suggests, my, my memory was that the reason we're keeping it to is simply because nobody wants the other. So it would be not completely decommissioned, but stored, I'm sure inside the bay, because again, the fire station is this building, the bays are deep enough. Right. Right, well, there you go. So you know that there's room to have it in. From a budget standpoint, they'll sort of move point because we've already committed to it.
Yeah, it's been delivered. Four to six weeks.
Just don't want to park it in the woods and highway.
Speaking of, we surplus that Kaiser ambulance and sold it for five thousand two hundred dollars. And somebody came on a flatbed from Pennsylvania and loaded it up.
That's surprising.
So we had a nineteen fifty's era Kaiser Jeep ambulance that was. Parked in the woods and rotting.
And they took all the roots that were rolling to it along with it because they had to cut them out.
The RMV asked me for an odometer reading and John Dudley sent me a picture of the dash with just wires and sticks coming out. There's no odometer. So Katie did a great job and did title work through the. Federal agency that works on this sort of stuff. We got it surplus, Army surplus, you know, decades ago. Probably without an intended use when we first got it. So there are hobbyists and enthusiasts and collectors of all these things. So, yeah, we sold it five thousand two hundred dollars and they had to come pick it up.
And I would also add that our Congressman Jay Goshenclaus's office. And his staffers did a great job tracking down the. Whoever it was, we, we tried for a year to get somebody from the federal government to tell us and it kept telling us it was state government. But then I kept reminding it was the US government. You know, and I had to send somebody the same picture six times of the tag. And finally, Auction Class's office sent us a letter. Authorizing us to do this. And that's finally when the registry of motor vehicles, it took three tries. But she got the registry of motor vehicles to issue the title to us and then we could. You know.
Yeah.
Properly.
So that happened just maybe, maybe two weeks ago. But yeah, I just sent those questions to myself, so I'll. I'll give it to our team, we have the answer.
So potentially we can have follow-ups on. Tonight at our future, future meetings where we talk through the other budget items.
So as a reminder, Wednesday, we have Board of Health, BBT and Police.
And just to verify for the benefit of hope, members of the FinCon, next Wednesday is only budget on the agenda or is it expected to be slated in the middle of a larger agenda?
The, the plan is just budget. And I mean, unless something. Comes up that's urgent, but I think probably won't need to with the number of meetings that we have coming up.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, one of the bigger pieces of feedback is I think we prefer to have focused discussion where we're not trying to shove budget stuff into the middle of this longer thing that's already multi-lived.
Right.
This approach addresses, I'm getting concerned about.
Okay, good. I mean, we do have, this coming Wednesday, we do have a few other things, but we'll try to, you know, minimize the impact on your committee.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. To talk about our minutes. Any, anything else? So I think we have, we have some meetings coming up, so.
Go like we'll talk again soon.
Yeah, I think, I think we will. And so I guess I would.
Well, any other further comment on Billy, Jack?
Nothing here, thank you.
Nothing for me, thanks.
That's good.
All right. So we're good.
I should do a adjournment, second.
All in favor? Okay, so the select board is adjourned at eight fifty-eight. I don't know if you'd need to do a roll call.
Yeah, so all, all in favor, so we had a motion and we seconded.
Yeah, I, I made the motion, Billy, Ron Z and Mike A seconded to adjourn.
So all is in favor, we're going to do a roll call, so.
Jack, hi.
Yes.
Ron.
Mike Gregor, Justin Griller.
We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.